There we go.
Oh, Campbell, I see you. Hold on, I'll bring you over. Thank you so much, Megan.
Oh, you're welcome.
Meg, will Andrew be joining us today?
I believe so.
Okay. It's just for, I'll give a couple more minutes and still see, I don't see Stephen Welch.
Yeah, we're waiting, it looks like Dave isn't on yet.
Yeah.
And neither is Barry. Welcome, Carl.
Hello.
Hello, Carl, welcome.
Hi, hi, John. Fritz, hi Nat.
Hey, Carl, nice to see you.
To you, hi Megan, nice to see you. Hi Catherine and Leslie too. Campbell.
Hi Carl, welcome.
Hey Catherine, thank you.
Hi Carl, nice of you to join us.
Hi, hi Campbell.
Meg, I think I will make an announcement when we when we open up about the continuation of Fair Street because I'm sure there will be people joining in waiting.
And I did go ahead and emailed anyone that I've received written comments from because they have, you know, a list of all those email addresses just to give everyone a heads up.
Great. And how about Arthur Reed? I know he represents a fair amount of people, I think forty plus people or houses in the area. Not, I don't see him here, but I wonder if he was notified.
Yep, so he wouldn't be on the panelist screen, but I do see him as an attendee, he's here. And yes, he was on both my email as well as Sarah Alder's email.
Great, thank you. I see Barry, welcome Barry. And Stephen Welch, excellent, so we're getting there. I think we're only missing from the
Dave.
Full board, Dave Iverson, is that correct, or is he sneaking in there somewhere?
Let me text him.
I see Andrew's here, I think we're just waiting for Dave. We do have a quorum, so Meg, what we can do is open up the meeting and then if Dave joins in or texts you, ah, there he is. Perfect timing, it just doesn't speak. Okay, I think we're ready. Welcome Dave.
Thank you, sorry.
Oh, you're perfect timing. Great, so welcome to the April eleventh, two thousand twenty-two meeting of the Nantucket Planning Board. We are conducting this meeting via Zoom webinar and remote participation pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, two thousand twenty order regarding open meeting law. Members of the board that are in attendance and including staff, when I call your name, please acknowledge your presence. Dave Iverson, Vice Chair.
Hi.
Nat Lowell.
Hi.
Fritz McClure.
Hi.
Barry Rector.
Hi.
And I think we have both alternates, Cam Sutton.
Here.
Stephen Welch.
Here.
And for staff, we have Andrew Vorse. Leslie Snell. How, here, yes, okay. Meg Trudell.
Here.
Catherine and Sarah. Ah, she's waving, so welcome. Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order with the motion for the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sorry, go ahead.
I believe cardboard shirt is here too, so your other alternate is now.
Oh. Sorry, Carl, I was so excited to see you, I quickly forgot about you, so that's how welcoming you are and familiar, so.
Hello, everybody.
Welcome, Carl.
All right.
Glad to have you.
Glad to have you back, you bring a lot of
Yeah, welcome back, Carl. Welcome back.
So with that, Carl, in attendance, you can officially say aye.
Aye.
Perfect, now we're ready. I'd like to call the meeting of the planning board and I'd like to get a motion to approve the agenda. Is there one?
So moved, sir.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Barry made the motion to approve, I believe Fritz made the second roll call. Barry?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. For the minutes, I believe we are looking at the approval of three minutes. January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, February seventh, two thousand twenty-two, and March tenth, two thousand twenty-two. I believe we are continuing to February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, to continue to the May ninth, twenty-two thousand twenty-two meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the three sets of minutes as you've just read into the record.
Motion's been made by Barry and seconded by Nat, roll call Barry.
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Now on to second dwellings. Unless there's someone that has a comment, needs to recuse or abstain from something. I'd like to take these as a group, there are three of them. Two fifty, two sixty-five Madicket LLC, two sixty-five Madicket Road, Baltic Avenue LLC, that's eight Holly Street, Chris Loftus, twenty Appleton Road. Is there a motion?
I'm over to approval of the three secondary dwelling applications.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is that you Dave?
That is me, and that's with all the, with all the staff recommendations.
Correct, yes. So, motion's been made by Fritz and seconded by Dave, roll call Fritz.
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. We'll do the same thing unless there's someone that would like to recuse or have a discussion for the A and Rs.
I'd make a motion to endorse all the A and Rs on the agenda.
Okay.
John, you're muted somehow.
Oh. There you go.
Megan did it to you.
Okay. Okay, motion's been made by Dave and seconded by Nat to approve the three A and Rs, roll call Dave.
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Now on to previous plans. There is a Maple Lane subdivision, I believe we are looking for a Form J, the the release of three building lots. This was brought up at the last, endorsed by the planning board under the last meeting. We're looking to endorse the Form J. Is there any discussion or motion?
Make a motion to approve and endorse the Form J. Second.
Okay, the motions were made by Fritz and seconded by Barry, roll call Fritz.
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. And now on to preliminary plans. This is for Egan Lane, I'd like to see if there's, I'm not sure who is representing, but maybe Meg, you can tell us about her or Leslie or Andrew.
Chairman, I'd like to start if I could.
Please, Andrew, go ahead.
So, this is a situation that involving Egan Lane and somewhat next door area, which is the Pinecrest subdivision. If you're not familiar with these, you'll know that there are some very odd. Oh, thank you, Megan, there's some very odd orientation to these particular lots, so these were created by Approval Not Required A and R back, I think in the late eighties, early nineties. This area is zoned RC two, and basically these small lots that are located down here by Old South Road are, you know, basically have the forty feet of frontage, and they connect to these ten-foot sort of connectors that go back to a larger lot area in the back. So historically, this was actually this entire area, this, all this land that comprises of Egan Lane and the land that comprises nearby Pinecrest were going to be Noshup two, they were going to be the same overall density that was created in Noshup. And you can see some of those lots sort of on the, on the left-hand side of this where Witherspoon Drive is and some of the back ends of the lots that about this. So, this, this area of Egan Lane and the area of Pinecrest have been very difficult areas to redo the zoning. Partly because all of the lots, except for the ones in the way back that are on Hinsdale, have only that forty feet of frontage and the access that goes in that everybody sort of treats as a road is really a common driveway. So that's the back portions of the lots are those bigger squares in the, in the, in the rear portion that are accessed via a common driveway. So, actually, beginning in two thousand five, two thousand six, I've had ongoing conversations with the residents of both of these areas. These are people that are made up, you know, mostly of year-round families that bought these lots quite some time ago. To try to figure out how we're going to work out rezoning of these out of RC two and into some a zoning district that makes more sense for what we've done. So this plan is sort of the result of those ongoing discussions. And what we're kind of doing here is a subdivision in reverse. Because again, remember these lots that we, that are here are A and R lots, so they, they have no conditions on them. They, the board signed them because they had that minimum frontage on Old South Road back in the day. So the plan here is that the county commissioners would be asked to lay out basically the, the main road, Egan Lane going in, going to the back cul-de-sac. And then there are two spurs, there's there's that one that needs a name, and then there's the spurs down in the front that access, that are actually the real access points to those lots. So, the layout would become a public road, and where the planning board comes into this is, it's MGL forty-one, section I, where basically no public ways to be laid out unless referred to the planning board. And a forty-five day period basically elapses where the planning board can do an investigation, maps, reports, and recommendations, so those, those would go to the county commissioners. So ultimately, the county commissioners decide in the end about laying the road out. And this is a very preliminary discussion with you to, you know, again, talk about the things you would normally consider in a, in an actual subdivision. So, there's a couple of things to consider here is that the, because there's multiple properties and multiple banks involved and multiple owners. The intent here is to lay the road out initially as an easement over the various properties, these are all Land Court properties. There would be a requirement, if any of the properties are subdivided over time, that the little pieces of the lots, and you can see that dash line going through some of the road, those would all be gradually gathered up into an actual roadway layout that would be under the ownership of the homeowners association. So again, homeowners association would own the underlying roadway land over time, subject to the public easement. All of the lots in the back, so the this layout of the road allows the front lots to become separate properties. And because it opens up frontage for these back lots, there's an agreement, even though they're all oversized, that they would not be subdivided to the minimum. The agreement would be that they would be subdivided, allowed to be subdivided only once. And that the property owners would agree to rezoning of this backland into C-TAC, which is, matches much of the existing uses now where you have businesses and homes together. There is the creation of where some of the lots come together to allow a separate lot to be created out of those, which would be able to fund you know, the engineering and legal costs required to do this. And the other important thing is that water and sewer right now doesn't fully serve this area, it's in the Wellhead District. Once the public road is laid out, the water and sewer lines can go under that, under that roadway and gradually connect these properties up. Right now, it's very convoluted, as you can imagine, where water or sewer easements have to be negotiated across each ten-foot strip. So again, it's like, this is planning in reverse, but unfortunately, you know, this was the decision made back in the day to develop this property. So, I want to thank the neighbors, they've really, you know, again, it's not easy getting fourteen separate people to sort of come together work together towards a common goal. They will benefit from this in the long run, but the town benefits as well because, again, the, the full density won't be realized here in this particular plan, and you know, you should all realize that you know, if we don't do this with a group of people who are, you know, willing to work with the town, you know, there's always a possibility that this land could be gradually acquired over time. And, you know, the RC two, which is the current zoning, could somehow be realized here, and that's a density that is, that's very significant for this location. So I see this as a win-win. You know, with the neighbors sort of doing some ground level planning and putting a lot of time into this, and again, there's nothing for the board to do right now, we wanted to give you an advance notice of this. When this is submitted to the county commissioners, there will be a referral and you will have forty-five days to submit a report at that time, so. And I would think what you would think about is the road surface. You know, the support for the density outline that we've talked about, again, the county commissioners or the Board of Selectmen will hold that restriction, that's for them to enforce. And any other thing that you, you know, that you want to bring up, so.
Great, thank you very much, Andrew. If the board members have any questions or comments, Fritz, I see your hand, yes.
Uh, yeah, just, what happens to the the forty-foot frontage lots, frontage lots on Old South Road? Are they are there houses on them now, or could there be houses on them?
Yeah, right now, there's a combination of houses and businesses on those lots right now. None of them have direct access to, to Old South Road and the bike path goes through there. They have access along that spur road, so they would be renumbered onto that spur road. You know.
Okay. That's all I have.
Any other board members, questions, comments?
Yeah, just a couple of things, Mr. Chairman. Andrew, this is, so basically what you've done here is same thing as Pinecrest, except C-TAC instead of that our town, or whatever you did with the one subdivision. Same concept.
So the minimum lot sizes are, are doubling from five to ten thousand.
Right, no, I know, what I mean is like the same arrangement, it's just not the same zoning because they have all residential. What happens, Andrew, in those front lots? If someone, say, combined a lot in the future, would, are they subject to the same? Would they then be subject to, to they're going to have the same zoning, they're going to have C-TAC in the front, right, too?
Front may be CN to deal with a smaller lot size. To keep them into conformance, so, but it, because of that size, they're, they're somewhat limited to kind of pretty much the uses that are allowed right now.
Yeah. Because I think it's an important point that you brought up about what could happen if this was left alone, like we did with Pine, with Pine yeah, with Mary Ann Drive and the other one, whatever the other one's called, when they were all RC two and theoretically, somebody could have bought multiple lots and created quite a quite a project, so this, this is good. It's very important to get this done with this generation of people that are there now. Exactly what you said. So what, what do we do next, Andrew? Are you going to be at the hearing with, with county commissioners so they understand what we're doing? Obviously.
Yeah, yes, I will, and I, if there's any events from the board, you know, I'd like you to indicate if you're generally supportive of the concept and if you had any specific things that come to mind about road construction or, you know, anything, now would be the time to bring that up, but you will have an opportunity once you get an actual referral.
Yeah, I think that, in my opinion, because of all the sewer work that hasn't been done, there's going to be a lot of of expense and, and I'm sure that most of that is not going in the road, it's going to be in those ten-foot strips you said earlier, or some sort of arrangement that they're going to have between properties. So I don't think we should get too heavy into what we, like, the road to be like, it's paved now, it's not very wide. Doesn't have berms, but you can pass and repass pretty easily, you know, for the most part.
So, Andrew, would you like me to poll the board to see if it, in general, is it, if it's favorable or still need some work? Non-favorable to give you an indication of what we're thinking as a board? Is that what I'm gathering for the, when it comes for, before, before it goes to the county commissioners?
I think that would be helpful, John, because, you know, there's a lot of work in here, there's a lot of cross-property transfers and engineering work, and before they go forward and, you know, and start sort of racking up.
And, and that's why I think to, if, if we have more, if we need more discussion or something, I, I look to the board for that, because this, I like to refer to as herding cats. We have fourteen property owners, this is very difficult to imagine these pork chops, similar to the Pinecrest that is neighboring to the right. And to get everybody on board to, for a plan like this, and it's a win-win, we're eliminating the RC two zoning district, potentially going to the C-TAC. It is a win for the property owners as they're able to separate it, because right now, for the most part, they are separated, but it's not conforming. We have some landscapers on one side in the front on Old South Road, we have resident, single-family residents on, on Old South Road. It'd be nice to actually designate something and conform, while also, you know, consolidating some of the roadways. And from what I understand, some of those consolidated rights, those little lines going through that, that connect the back properties to the front, they're going to be consolidated and listed as a lot that would eventually potentially be sold, that would fund a lot of the engineering work and the roadwork and things like that, so that's another benefit in itself alone and the, and the association. So, there's a lot going on here, I, I never in thirty years would think that we'd get to this point where that could be cleaned up. So, you know, just what you've presented, I'm actually pretty impressed that we've been able to get this bar and, and it looks like a, a solution on the horizon, so I'll be the first to say I'm favorable of this. And I'm sure it can be fine-tuned, but I would give it a favorable recommendation just from my opinion, so I'll entertain other members, Barry?
Go to Dave first, he has his hand up for a bit, please.
Okay, David, please.
So predictable, Barry.
I'll have to change that.
No, I mean, I, I think this is great, I know this has been a headache for a long time, that, that, that planning's trying to, to figure out, and I appreciate that, that they're giving up a considerable amount of grand cover, ground cover and, and the ability to subdivide. I just, I, I think just to be fair, I, I think we need to make clear that, that the Cusule property is not part of that, just to be fair for anyone watching. I unfortunately wish it was, but, uh, yeah, so that, that's the only thing I want to point out is that the Cusule property is separate from, from the rest of those restrictions, I think, correct?
Correct.
Okay, yeah. Perfect, thank you.
Barry?
Thanks, all I'm going to say is very impressive, this has been, what, close to about fifteen years in the making to get there? So, that, that's pretty incredible, have the neighbors given any indication what they want to do with the roadway system? Since, you know, we've been working with them as, as a board for some time? So Andrew, Leslie, Megan.
I think that they're pretty much, you know, they want to keep the road, you know, pretty much where it is, there, there is some relocation that has to take place in the front as you enter off of Old South Road, but again, close to where the existing, you know, surface.
All right, and, and with the, you know, with what's going to go on, the potential for a little bit more additional subdivision, as staff, would you concur with that?
I think so, I think that, you know, there may be Yeah, I think so, I think that, you know, there may be uses that are subject to special permit there that, you know, the board may condition additional. Um, requirements.
Yeah, that that was kind of why I was asking a little bit, because depending upon what, especially with like some of the backlots. If they get a little bit more intensive, that's that's why I'm saying, you know, we I I wanna be looking a little bit ahead. To make sure we're not having to redo things later, but if the general consensus is that. Kind of what's there will will work well, then um, you know, as one board member, I'd say fantastic work and let's see what we can do to make this happen. Thank you.
Um, Cam, I see your hands raised, I just wanted to note that it is a preliminary, so happy to hear. Anything you have to say uh about this, but obviously, I think the uh county commissioners are going to look for a uh. Oh, uh, support from the board, but please go ahead, um, you always have something interesting to add, so I'd like to hear it.
Well, um, thank you for that, I wasn't quite sure what the the starting of what that was or. Whether I wasn't supposed to say something.
Oh, no, that's why I called on you, of course.
I just wanted to um. To pick up on Nat's comment on on the road, I. Uh, just listening to Andrew's presentation, taking a look at it, I know for me, it's a little confusing, all the lines everywhere, but I I understand what. They're talking about, I just, um. I would encourage the road to be of sufficient width that the types of. Uh, work vehicles that utilize the road can safely pass on the road. Without doing destruction to the side of the road. And and I get that just from my own experience, living in a uh area that had. Has grown significantly from when the road was first put in and. The road is really no longer of sufficient width to safely handle the vehicles um without. Destroying the road, so that, I guess that's my my two cents. On that, so I just wanted to. Say that, thank you.
Uh, Barry?
Thanks, I just, um, I see Rhett DePont on, I see Greg Mascal on, and I I don't know if they just had anything they wanted to add. So through you, sir, if you're if you're so inclined.
Um, yeah, Meg, I don't see those, um, I'm not privy to those that are attending that. Um, so if you see a hand raised or somebody that would like to come comment.
They're here, Brett and Brett and Greg are here as panelists.
Okay.
Representing the neighbors.
That uh Red or Greg would like to add, um, please recognize them, Meg?
Um, how's it going? Can you all hear me?
Hi, Rhett, welcome.
Yeah.
How are you?
Good.
Um, well, actually, we're we're pretty pleased that that you guys are all pleased with this initial. Um, drawing, um, Greg has has taken care of a lot of it, I'm new to this board, but um. Yeah, it seems like we've got a lot of the neighbors on board here for it and, you know, hopefully, it's the kind of thing that we can. Make happen here.
Yeah, we're really pleased that uh you're in favor as well, I mean, I think it's just great. And I I do think we're all of the same mind, I mean, there's obviously a lot of details that have to be worked out, we have a sewer plan. On paper, you know, we're gonna move forward once we get the road taken, we're all trying to get everything in line, so. You know, I'd like to work with you and whatever we have to do to make it work, let's do it.
Great, thank you, uh, and I guess while we're talking about roads, uh, I'm sure the fire department will be consulted at some point. To make sure they have clear access and turnarounds and things like that for fire trucks and safety equipment.
We have hydrants in our our water and sewer plan and we've we do have a turnaround, hopefully it's adequate, we'll find out.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else on the board? Uh, with that, um, just for, uh, I'd like to have a roll call, um, if you're in favor. Um, or you don't want to comment, um, please note, so I'll just go in random order, uh, Nat?
Favorable.
Uh, Barry?
Bearable.
Fritz?
Favorable.
Dave Iverson?
Favorable.
And the chair is favorable, thank you all very much and and good luck in the future.
Thank you.
Yes, Andrew, go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you, it's been a lot of work and um I do appreciate your road on this, so thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, moving on to public hearings, I would like to announce that the Fair Street, uh, I believe it's twenty-seven and twenty-nine. Is going to be continued to till May, so if there's anybody tuning into that, um. We are continuing that, uh, as far as the Great Harbor Yacht Club, that is also continued to the May ninth meeting. And the forty-eight West My Comet Road is continued to the May ninth meeting. So it looks like the next uh on the agenda is the, yes, yes, sir.
Sorry, before you get off of that, do you just want a motion to accept the continuances for those three projects?
That would be great, Barry, is that your motion?
Yeah, so for Great Harbor Yacht Club, Catherine Dean Scholman and uh twenty-seven, twenty-nine Fair Street, make a motion.
If there are second.
A second.
Motion's been made to continue all the three uh as listed by Barry, seconded by Dave, roll call, Barry.
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Fritz?
Hi.
Nat?
Hi.
Chair votes aye, um, now on to the next, uh, Acme Mid Island LLC and Act Offices LLC. Eighteen eighteen eighty, eighteen A, twenty twenty-two, twenty-four and twenty-six Sparks Ave. Um, I will. Uh, ask if there's anyone present uh representing.
Dan Malloy's here.
Hi, Dan, welcome, and if there's anything you'd like to add or say or or staff, if you'd like to present, please, feel free.
Uh, good afternoon, do you want me to just run right through it, Megan?
Sure.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I think this will be fairly quick, we're here before you tonight, uh, really with just another update as to where everything stands, what we've been up to with this project. If you'd like, I can throw a screen up, plant up on the screen. Uh, I'll do that right now, if that's okay, it's not gonna look tremendously different than what you've already seen.
Meg, go ahead, if you if you need assistance.
Okay. Staff popping up for everybody?
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. So. Pretty much a lot of the same discussion as last time, uh, first, we have in discussions with both of the Butters, uh, Cumberland Farms property owners. On the left side here, we've been talking to them, as well as Mr. Young on this side. Uh, we're still in discussions with both parties, so what you're looking at here is still a concept, there's been been no official agreements with anybody as of yet. Uh, but the general intent is still the same, with a shared driveway coming down this way, working with Cumberland Farms. And then again, another shared driver working with Mr. Young and the condo owners, it's sixteen Sparks on this side. Uh, so the general layout, everything you're looking at here is what you saw at the last meeting, so there's no 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 great changes here. Couple of things that have happened since the last meeting, we did have a coordinated review meeting last week. Uh, and that brought up a lot of questions to do with layout, utilities, infrastructure improvements. So I think all things we expected to discuss, I wouldn't say there's any surprises from that meeting. Uh, there were discussions to do with improvements in Sparks Ave to do with sewer line possibly. A lot of discussion to do with stormwater improvements in the road, um, that's a, again, that's something we expected to come up and certainly we're working on that now. As part of the project, I expect we'll be working with the town to rebuild this sea, stormwater system in this part of Sparks Avenue. Uh, one of the more interesting discussions that came up, which I think will be of interest, uh, there was a member of National Grid on the call. And we had some discussions about taking some telephone poles below grade. I know that's always an interesting topic, so right in front of the site, there's a pole here. Another pole here, another Downey Flake driveway entrance, another dr- another pole over here. That's uh right next to the house fitters driveway. So we are going to meeting with National Grid to see what the options and abilities are of taking those underground. Uh, that would benefit us from a site layout access standpoint, as well as aesthetically and safety would benefit everybody. So that is something we're looking into, I can't say as of yet, that discussion just started, whether that's actually going to happen, but we are pursuing it. Um, to see if we can make that happen. Uh, one of the aspects of that, obviously, if you want the ground, you you have to find a place to put everything. So when things go underground, we now have transformer pads and things have to go someplace. So that's something we have to take into consideration as well. Uh. One thing that has come up is an item, and I'm not not sure if this will happen, but something I want to bring to the board's attention in the. In the discussions and the plan preparation with the neighbors on both sides. Uh, what you're seeing here is driveways down property lines here and here. Uh, and one thing that we're running into is we're revamping the site to share the driveways and expand the parking for everyone. Uh, I expect we're gonna run up, start running and pumping into the open space requirement. Uh, I don't know as of yet, depending on how the layout works with the Butters, uh, but I expect at some point, we may be coming back to the board, uh. With potentially discussing the ability to get asked for some type of relief on the twenty percent open space. Uh, normally would have landscaping on the sides, but with the shared driveways, that's taking away that space for us. So that's that's something we're running up against now, it just come up, so. Not asking for a waiver at this time, but I just want to throw it out there that we may be headed in that direction. And. I can just change the page quick here. Uh, there was a request to see what the garage looks like underneath, I'll just flip over to this. This is still a work in progress, just to give you an idea. So this is the lower level parking garage. So the shared driveway entrance would be on this side here, here's the ramp coming down. The idea being. Traffic flow would circulate here and come out, and then be parking on this side as well. So right now, we're looking at around seventy parking spaces below grade. With somewhere between seventy and eighty above grade. So if things work out in the direction we're headed, we're looking at somewhere in the hundred and forty to hundred and fifty parking space provided for the whole for the whole project. Uh, that is the update, so right now, our intention is to continue talks with the Butters, look at some of these street improvements upfront. Between sidewalks, utilities, and see what we can come up with with everybody to make a plan. And then present that back to you, I guess, once we have something with a little more detail. Uh, that is a quick summary as to where we are.
So, Dan, I I. I was off island a couple of weeks ago, and I had gotten off the steamship with my car, made a exited the terminal, made a right. And I don't know if you're familiar with it, if you've been over there recently, but on the right-hand side, as I go towards Main Street. Uh, there's a development that's being done, I think it's a commercial on the first floor, uh, residential on the second floor with parking in the back. And it reminded me of something like this, um, I'm just curious of the uh the proportional size, if you're familiar with that. Uh, if you know the 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 size of the buildings that you're looking to construct, the three of them, and how they fare. In comparison to those units that are over there being being uh built right now.
I have to say, I am not familiar with it, I can certainly take a look at some maybe Google Earth pictures to get an idea, but I I have no information on that one.
Okay, uh, yeah, actually, as I I looked at the height, I looked at the um, the spacing of the buildings, I looked at the size of the buildings. It it, you know, I actually thought it was pretty pleasing to look at and it conformed with the area. And I was just wondering, you know, obviously, I'd like to see proportionally how it compares to what you're proposing. Because if yours is three times the size or four times or something like that, it would give a visual to to something that. I might have more comments on, but if it was proportionally the same size or, you know, one and a half times, then. I might be able to wrap my head around it a little bit better, because the drawings are great, we can talk about um, public safety, access, fire department, parking. Um, open space, uh, but the open space, as you're already looking to maybe get a waiver for. Um, the size of the buildings might affect that, because maybe the smaller buildings would give you more open space when we're starting to affect. The access and and parking, so it's just something, I'm not obviously looking for an answer if you're not familiar with the project, but it's something that. If you're in the area before the next meeting, um, take a gander at it, and I just wanted to uh bring that to your attention, because I'd like to get. Some kind of concept, um, you know, feedback about that.
Where whereabouts is that, just so I can take a look?
Right, right up the street from the uh steamship, so if you're on, if you're on, you're coming off the steamship with your car. You have to go uh to the left there and then you make a right. As soon as you cross over the street, right before Main Street, on your right-hand side, before the hardware store. Uh, that used to be a parking lot that they used to charge by the day, and now it looks like maybe the uh Hyannis. Had had done something that is, you know, affordable housing on the second floor or something like that, that. It might factor into what we're looking to do here.
Okay, I'll start and look into it, see what I can get for information.
Great, thank you. Anybody on the board, questions, comments, discussion?
Where are we at with HTC?
Um, HTC hasn't started, we have to nail down what this site's going to look like, how the buildings fit. Before that process starts, I I expect we'll be probably wrapping up planning board with you prior to going HTC.
Because they can change the building size, Dan, right, I mean, they can create all sorts of different things to happen here. Sort of similar to what happened with the six FG. So, I'm just trying to not have a. I don't know, overlap of different opinions, and then all this work goes to something else, and then it looks like. You know, it leaves us open for criticism a little bit, I I'm just trying to, looking at this property, not as sacred as the. Craig property, but this is kind of similar, it's starting to shake out the way that did originally when DJ McKinnon had it. Remember that they were doing the same type of project with the bowling alley and the, we called it the Niantucket Chuck E. Cheese kind of thing. But now we're switching it down to here, which is, you know, this is how things work here, and that's not gonna happen at the other spot now, so now we're down here. No one ever would have dreamed that this was gonna happen, so I'm just saying. It was, there was a lot of discussion about the building height and how much was underground because of that topography. And I and I'm hearing similar. Issues here, you know what I'm saying? Uh, so that's all, I'm just trying to. Get it, I don't know, well, we can't really be the HTC, but we're kind of being the HTC a little bit. Cause of this, you know, it's running out of space and, you you know, and all that, the sharing is huge, Dan. That, I mean, we talked about that the first day. This has to work like really well out of the gate. And I think the improvement that can happen on the Cumberland side and the gas station with that thing we discussed about. Sort of you kind of have a head-on collision there for a second, you know what I mean? And I think that's gonna be great, because we're gonna be able to fix some of the things that kind of don't work sometimes over there. But the. The um. House for the side is what you're talking about. And that is, it's gonna be wonderful if that can be fixed, so there's one in and out. You know, type of thing where there's not wasted land like there is now, you know? We've got hedges in the way, spite signs, and this is my space, not yours, and all that stuff. So, that's all I'm saying, just thought I'd throw that in. So, thank you.
I see him, Cam, your hand, please.
Oh, yes, thank you, John, this has more to do with parking, because I sort of agree on the HTC piece. That um, now, I was just speaking about, though, uh, to that, I would agree, I have seen those, um. I believe they're condominiums, or at least that's what the sign says, on your way. Um, out from the steamship, and I guess my concern there is the same one here. Uh, the height, I I'm not sure it's actual height that bothers me, but they loom over. A pedestrian, so I'm trying to think of how you would create a lighter. Or recessed top that would sort of add more movement and it wouldn't loom, but that's an HTC thing. Anyway, back to my thing on the parking, so I noticed that there's going to be a number of apartments, right, so there's eighty bedrooms, so I'm not talking about. Um, parking per bedroom, but what I am wondering is whether. In the basement area, so underground parking, whether there would be. in the basement area, so underground parking, whether there would be one space per apartment. Um, reserved, sort of like I think, um, Dan, I was talking about over on Amelia Drive where there's some maybe employee housing or non-employee housing going in over where the electric, not the electric company, but the electrical company is. So that, that's one question. I wasn't quite sure in the packet about the, the parking in the middle because I, I did appreciate that where the, the way the lot was divided, you had buildings in the front and you had parking in the middle uh, with a building to the rear as well. And I sort of liked the way that maybe functions a little bit better in terms of getting customers or people that are there able to utilize the buildings more easily based on the internal, uh, placement of the parking at ground level. Um, and I think those were my, my main, uh, that was my main question and my, my main thought. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Cam. Stephen Welsh.
Even, you're muted.
You're muted, yeah.
Thanks. Um, if we could look at the site plan, please? The one showing the, um, structure with existing building footprints.
Is that better?
Yeah, thanks a bunch, Dan. So, uh, as I, what I was saying was I appreciate the additional information you provided. Um, I think on the parking garage, one of the, just a really granular comment, with the water table being what it is in that area and the depth you're probably gonna have to go to, um, given the size of these buildings and the superstructure that were required. And fire, um, protection systems, basically you're gonna have a pretty deep garage area. So I, I do have some concerns about the practicality of having an underground garage. The other thing I just want to hit on the, on the underground garage is those parking spaces are still um, eighteen by nine, which is, um, undersized for the, uh, the regulations, most of them in any event. And we, um, you know, with the new, uh, Bronco out, we're not going towards, uh, smart cars, we're going towards, uh, big wide vehicles. So I think practicality needs to be kept in mind. That's a really kind of granular on the parking garage. I think more, uh, broad stroke. If we go back to the site plan, um, and I, I don't wanna, I, I don't think there's any need to be careful about getting into the HTC stuff in the sense that there, I think there's a lot to chew on here and one of those is with respect to the, the size of the buildings, but not with respect to the massing, which is the HTC territory, but with respect to the ground cover. So how much square footage do these buildings, um, cover? And the other is the, um, size of the parking area. So on the size of the buildings, I mean, if you look at the existing structures in that area, they're, they're, I mean, they're not even dwarf, dwarfed. They're minuscule compared to these structures. Um, the stop and shop obviously is a different animal in that it is a, you know, it's a, it is pretty much de facto the island grocery store. Whereas these are not intended to be, uh, that facility somewhere else on the island. Um, which frankly is something I think we should encourage, but that's a different discussion. Um, so I think the concept here is that these buildings with respect to their, their square footage, their ground coverage, it's tremendous. Um, I think it maximizes or over maximizes the development potential. If you consider parking, which I'll segue into parking, um, the, there's not enough space for all the parking that's required. There's waivers required for, you know, a good, I think it's twenty or twenty-five percent of the parking spaces that are required under zoning. And that doesn't include the aspect of these being downsized. Um, taken together with, um, the, uh, impact on traffic. If you think about the Downey Flake and you think about going through there and you think about having the tractor trailer there and offloading, uh, you know, foodstuffs, um, multiply that out by the, the number of mercantiles here, add the number of cars for people who will be staying in the residences. Um, I think the traffic congestion is dramatic and on top of that, the traffic flow is gonna be materially impeded on a more regular basis. And it all goes back to, um, you know, you can't mitigate all of that, but you can mitigate some of it with the building size. Having more parking on site, having adequate parking on site. And then the reason I say it's maximized or over maximized is, you know, Dan, you'd mentioned, and I appreciate you being forthright about it, that you'll probably be coming back or you may be coming back for an open space waiver. Well, you know, that open space waiver is in the, in the regs for a reason, and the reason is to try and, part of it, I think, is to try and maintain the character and setting and not to have a commercial, uh, you know, like, oh, I'm not suggesting that these buildings are like that. But the concept of parking at the Nantucket Sound and the Ocean State Job Lot and Staples, where you're literally side to side the property without any open space, without sufficient landscaping buffers. And I, I think that that would be a big mistake. Um, and I don't want anyone to misconstrue my comments. I have absolutely nothing against sensitive development. I just think that this is not that. And I think that it, there's a lot of work to be done and I'm, I personally, if I'm activated, will vote on this as a concern. And I want to be consistent and I want to be upfront about it because, um, this, I just cannot see this being successful in that area, given the density, the use, uh, and the, the parking and traffic and, uh, uh, concerns that will become real life issues. So, um, my point was is that I'm not against having something there, certainly. Um, I just think that it needs to be more sensitively done and it can't totally maximize or over maximize the lot as it does now. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else on the board? Barry, your hand.
Thank you. Um, where I want to start. The, you know, when we first started to lay out the Mid Island area plan, we, we knew that there was no question about it. This, this area was rapidly becoming the new downtown. Um, with that in mind, we've always kind of envisioned that these type of processes like the one you're presenting right now, Dan, we're, we're gonna come into play. That said, there's also been other development that's happened in that area that, that has kind of moved things along into that direction. And there's still more to come, especially if we look at something like the Craig property, alright? That all being said and done, I, I think we still need to be a little sensitive about how this project keys in to everything that's, that's in that area right now. So I do have a question for you first of all. Where are you with the traffic study on this?
Uh, the traffic study, we just have to finish. The traffic study was really waiting on to see what the layout was going to look like with driveways. So part of the traffic study is the intersections and the driveways. Uh, so we're just getting that started again. All the counts and everything have been done already over the summer. We just have to finish the analysis. The intent being, we were hoping, and it sounds that we're getting close now, is to come to, get to the point where we have a site plan that's, I'm not saying finished, but at least in the direction of where this thing is likely to end up, from at least from a driveway and parking standpoint. Um, then we can take that, finish the traffic analysis, which, you know, may tweak here and there as a project, you know, if there's major project changes, then maybe the report has to change, but we'll try to get that ready for you for the next meeting.
Okay, that, that would be helpful because I'm still gonna go back to, I have to concur with some of the things that Steve Welsh brought up as well too. I, I think he brought up some incredibly valid points about this. Um, I'm getting concerned that the list of waivers that you're looking for are starting to getting more instead of less. Um, I, the open space thing, I really gotta sit down and go back to that one. I mean, this isn't necessarily the, you know, the place for open space, but on the other side of the coin, considering it's being waived down to a certain value, I, I, I think we need to get a better sense of what that is. Um, I, again, I, 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 it really does serve its purpose at times. This may not be the best area to say this is the shining example of why open space works. But again, it's, it's a little troublesome at the moment. I'd like that maybe a little further refined in terms of what that waiver begins to look like. Um, I'm still gonna go back to the whole traffic thing, especially with that, that in and out concept so close to, um, the little rotary that we have and that intersection there. That's a busy area, especially, you know, even during the winter time at times, that area gets, gets a little bit jam-packed. And now that, given the size of this development and what's going on inside of it, that may be a lot of traffic coming in and out and trying to compete for, you know, getting into the regular traffic flow that's part of Sparks Ave. So I, I'm not really a big fan of it at the moment, and this is why I'm kind of throttling back till I see what the traffic report has to say. Um, one thing I'm gonna say to you is that no matter what goes on in the area at this point, when it comes time for construction now, you gotta make sure that Sparks Ave is back at full integrity before we get into summer mode. Um, and granted, if this is gonna take a while, it may mean you're having to restore Sparks Ave into something that kind of looks like what it is today. Um, the last thing that I, you know, because I'm thinking about that whole thing with the Steamship Authority that, um, John brought up, that access roadway that they're working on right now, there's a lot of traffic that still flows on that. And that access roadway, that street is miserable. It is just not something you want to be traveling down. So I want to kind of be sensitive toward the fact that when we do this, Sparks Ave during the summertime, not happening, at least, at least in my book. Um, it's gonna have to be, Sparks Ave is gonna be back at fully functional status, no matter what's going on there. Um, I, I'm really cautious to say this, but I'm gonna bring it up. It, it almost is getting to a point of where the scale of this development is maybe a little bigger than what it should be. And I hate saying that. And I'm not to, I'm not saying I'm not totally locked into it yet. But there's a little part of me in there that's saying that we, we need to think about that. Because I'm also concerned too, back to what Steve was saying about the underground parking spaces. This is Nantucket. If we're on the mainland, it may be a different thing, but here, everyone just about owns oversized vehicles, given the nature of the roadway system in Nantucket and how we're laid out. So we, we need to accommodate that maybe a bit better. Those smaller parking spaces will not work for, for these larger vehicles. Um, so I, I've got some concerns that I think need to be addressed here and boy, do I hate to say it as well. We can't put one board before another. But I do have my concerns where HTC is gonna track this thing where it comes out at, and are we going to have to go back before the planning board at this point to have to revise any of the things that have come up through HTC and how that integrates back into the area? Um, my mind isn't totally made up. I'm, I still want to be very open about this at this point, but these are concerns I'm starting to have just the further we're getting into this project. Um, so let, let me just stop there for a moment and I, I appreciate you listening. Um, we definitely need further dialogue. There's no, no question about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Um, I'd like to just comment, uh, I'm gonna take a little different approach and I hear everyone's comments and I, I just wanna say one thing. If not here, where? And I know that sounds, you know, like I'm all for this. I'm, I'm not. I think we have to really step back and balance this out. Uh, the island has gotten, uh, whether we like it or not, popular. You can't even go out to dinner. You, you, you know, especially not even, you know, during the, during the winter, a lot of places are closed. During the summer, you can't get in. It's, it's really being, uh, populated to a point where we can't function. So this area right here is the perfect area. It's the out of town, but close to town. It has town water, town sewer, you know, m- most of the, uh, uh, electric cable, everything is, is consolidated. Um, we have to be careful about traffic flows, obviously, and the, the density that comes along with it. But I think if we look at it as we've discussed in previous meetings, take this particular, we've already had the stop and shop. So to base that around what we're doing in the future, this is an intricate, um, um, part of this, that whole area that we have to really, uh, take a step back and say, how do we proportionally make this so that it's going to go along with other future development, maybe the Craig's property, you know? And there are going to be areas that have open lots there by the Sanford Boat Building that are going to be built up. Uh, the, the, the vacant lot next to the Seagrill. So what we do here going forward, um, has to be kind of planned. So it's not tilting in one way, uh, you know, in the scale of things. It's not overburdened on one particular side of that area and not on the other. I think it all has to be brought together and thought of um, as a combined plan, not just one plan. So if we're looking long-term, and I'm glad we're, we're bringing up things, um, that is not necessarily just for this one project. So the scale of things, the size of the buildings, this would maybe dictate what we do in other, of, of other areas. So if we're going to have three massive buildings right here, that might look at a place, but if we can kind of work where what we do here is going to be on the Craig property. Um, but traffic, one way, I've been saying this for many years. And I don't know, I don't, maybe it's falling on deaf ears, but everyone's bringing up traffic. And we have two lanes, safety pulling out the, the, if we're going to have a hundred and forty parking places here, whether it's residential, short-term people coming to the shop, there's going to be a lot of traffic. So if you're going two ways, you're actually looking both ways now. And, and pulling out of an area, just a thought, if we had one way going down Sparkton, one way going down Pleasant, and we make a connection somewhere, um, where the Sanford Boat Building is as a one-way coming. Um, so you could still have two ways for, for the Boys and Girls Club and, and, uh, in front of the high school and two ways on the other pleasant, but I, I think we should look into this as an overall plan because I think it would help, even if we had parking on the street with, you know, people say angle parking, y- you know, it doesn't, it, it, it's much better than the parallel parking because you can get more cars there. But if it was a one-way, you would, somebody angling would only have to deal with similar to Main Street backing out and people coming out there. When you have parking, they're not doing thirty-five miles an hour on that road. You already have something that's going to be twenty, twenty-five. And if it's going to be, uh, developed, we might even have less. So you're not gonna have that same safety issues when you're only going ten or fifteen miles an hour and somebody's backing out. Um, people are gonna stop. Um, it's just, you know, overall, I think we just have to start thinking about what do we want this area to be? And if not this area, where? Are we going to build something like this in Tom Nevers? Are we going to build it in Mattikit? Are we going to, so this is the mid-island. This is where everything's concentrated. This is close proximity to town, public transportation, which is a big thing when we have the, uh, shuttles that are going in from the, in town to the hub, coming out here, it's a short distance. We can actually take an overflow from downtown and quickly bring it out, um, to this, this area here. So I, I don't think this approval is just happening overnight. We don't expect it to. There's so many, uh, different things, um, different boards that have to put their, um, their, um, two cents in. And, you know, HTC is going to be a big, uh, big concern with the size of the building. Also the way it's positioned and how it looks in the, um, the overall elevations. But, um, when we factor all this, I really think we have to look long-term, what we expect the next twenty or thirty years. Not just vote on this as one particular project, but vote on it and, and give our thoughts to how it's going to affect future buildings and future lots. And sorry about that. It's a big mouthful, but, uh, uh, I just wanted to get everybody's n- negative comments to more constructive, positive going forward. So Dave, thank you for being patient. I see your hand was waving.
Well, John, I, I hope I don't wipe all that positivity.
Yin and yang, Dave, go ahead.
So listen, I, I, you know, I was gonna, again, I was gonna hold my comments. Uh, I think Stephen had a very good point that that's not really a fair approach is, is to hold back. So I, I'm gonna kind of tell you how I feel. Unlike, Barry doesn't want to say it, but I will say it. This is too much development for this piece of property. If we're asking for almost thirty percent waiver on parking spaces and we're talking, considering open space waivers, um, uh, you know, these, these items are built into our, our zoning code for a reason. Um, and I would say as far as parking, uh, I, I think it's a woefully inadequate number as, as it exists in our, um, in our zoning bylaw. So I think to ask for waivers is, um, So I think to ask for waivers is, um, especially in this area, I have a really hard time with it. You know, I I think that an open space, you know, open space serves more of a purpose than just um, preserving the general appearance of an area, I think, you know, especially with this much roof area and everything else. Where, you know, where's all this water gonna go? And and I think that when we start talking about covering up open space or open space waivers, I, um, you know, for many reasons, I just don't think it's a good idea. Um, and I think it some. In some way, these things are in our zoning bylaw to help reduce the amount of density of development on a lot in a positive way, to make it more useful and usable um, in an area. Um, I, you know, I can't help but think, you know, a lot of times we approve projects that we're not really excited about, but we approve them in the hopes that over the years, that the infill development around it will 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 create a situation where it's just part, it belongs, right? But I can't help but go back to the commons. That has never belonged, and and I sincerely doubt in our lifetime it will ever belong. And that is what my fear is with this project, is that it will never belong. Um, and that's all I got. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Barry?
Thanks. Um, I just, I wanna check in with staff for a moment. Do I, I'm feeling like maybe if staff can make available the Mid Island Area Plan that was done. I know it's somewhat outdated by now, but there was some significant work done on that and trying to vision for the future. Um, so I'm kind of hoping maybe just having that available to us may rekindle some things that we had really thought about with that, with the entire Mid Island area. And the fact that as time moved along, it would be developed on certain levels. Um, so I'd kind of like to revisit that. And John, thanks to you, that's, that's, that's kind of why I brought that up. Because that is still a very integral part of the conversation, was how Pleasant Street and Sparks Ave were supposed to work together and ultimately maybe become one-way streets with on-street parking on. And it completely changed the way it it looked as well, too. Not only how it acted with traffic pattern and traffic flow, but what was pretty impressive as well, too, is what did it look like when it got there? And as far as I remember, there were sketch plans and stuff done to be able to give it that that tangible look and feel. And maybe help us address kind of some of the concerns that we're having right now. It 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 also just reminds me, too, that there's often a point with many of these projects that are that are large scale, they all kind of come to this point, this juncture, where it's like, okay, we're, we're, we're feeling our way along with it, and now we're getting down into some of the stickier areas. They usually work in the end. I mean, I've sat on enough things like Great Harbor Yacht Club, uh, you know, possibly the development of, um, you know, the Craig property when J.J. McKinnon had it, they all, and even the Stop and Shop, they all kind of hit this juncture where it's like, okay, what can we really work with and live with here? And I think this is where we're heading into now. And that's probably the most difficult part of this whole venture as we do it. Um, so that's why I said, you know, I I want to get some of my concerns out there, but I still want to be very open-minded about the process in the end, um, and try to figure out what it's supposed to look like. But back to my original intent, if if staff could maybe share that with us at some stage, um, I think that may be a little bit helpful for the board. Thank you.
I'll see what, um, I'll see what I could dig up to get to you guys in advance of the next meeting.
Uh, Carl, I see your hand. Welcome again. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I just, I just had a, I was curious from Dan, if are these buildings still three stories tall, the revised plan?
Yes, they are.
I, I didn't want to take too much time to repeat basically some of the points that Stephen had and that David had. Um, but I have some concerns about the massing and the heights um, for the area. You know, if you look at Cumberland Farms and On Island Gas, and if you look at Bank of America and the post office, um, you sort of have a sort of a two-story um, situation going on there. And I was just curious, you know, would it be possible to reduce the size of the building, say, from, you know, two, two buildings that are eight thousand square feet, bring them down to six, and then bring the middle one down to four, uh, just a thought. Um, and then I I do share concerns about the underground parking garage with a high water table and the proximity to a wetland um, to the west of Nantucket Autobody. So I, I would just have some concerns about the massing and the size of the buildings. I think that the three buildings would work better than the previous plan. But I would say that uh, they could be two-story and and less, less, uh, less square feet. That might be better. That's just what I wanted to say.
Thank you, Carl. Um, before I recognize anybody else on the board, uh, we've been talking about it for a little while. So I'd like to check with Meg to see if there's anyone that's tuning in from the um, public. Um, maybe they would like to comment, and then I will obviously get back to the board and give you plenty of time. So Meg, if there's anybody, please let me know, and I will recognize them.
Yep, so we have Curtis Hemmy with his hand up.
Okay, Curtis, welcome.
He'll bring you over.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hi, Curtis, welcome. Thank you very much.
I'm the property owner at Sixteen Sparks Avenue, Unit E, right behind Chris Young and House Fitters there. I just wanted to introduce myself, uh, let you guys know that, uh, have a lot of concerns. I'm not against the project, or, you know, I'm just, I'm just want to say I'm here and I'm in the back of that property there. And uh, this uh, in-and-out easement is right in my front door. And uh, I heard on the recording from the last meeting that uh, I'm not sure you guys know I exist, so I'm just here to introduce myself. I spoke with Chris, the developer, uh, last week. We had an introductory conversation, and I expressed my concerns. And that's all for today. I'm just letting you know that I am here, and I am a partner with Chris Young and the condo, uh, the condo complex uh, on the house fitter side. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Curtis. Uh, and I would hope that you would be welcome into any conversation that Chris Young is having with the developer. Um, so you're inclusive of that, of that conversation as well.
Thank you.
Um, Stephen Welch, please, unless Meg, is there someone else? I'm sorry. No? Okay, uh, Stephen, go ahead, please.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate, I think, um, and maybe emphasize the concept. A couple of concepts that were brought up. To me, this is a landmark development, and I'm not necessarily saying that in a good way or a bad way. Um, it's gonna make a mark, or it's gonna, it's gonna create a mark. The question is, is it gonna leave a mark? Is it gonna be a landmark? Is it gonna, what is, what is it ultimately gonna be? And if you just hold that thought for a moment, the concept of the Mid Island Area Plan, I think, was incredibly valid and still is. Um, the other concept I would ask you to consider is that we typically review uh, development of a lot, maybe two lots. Um, with respect to traffic flowing in and out and how it affects adjacent areas. This development, as proposed, will affect, or even if modified, given it's three lots, will affect the area dramatically. Um, it could affect it in a very positive way, it could affect it in a neutral way, or in a very negative way. And I think the only way we get to neutral positive is if we look at it as opposed to um, as reviewing just the site plan and the adjacent property, it impacts on adjacent traffic features. We, we need to review, as uh, uh, our chairman was saying, uh, perhaps the traffic flow throughout the whole area. Um, how this, we need to perhaps review how this development will relate to future potential development in the area. Um, I think a lot of good can come from the review. I think it could move forward. It doesn't have to be a overly lengthy process. But I think that there is uh, some diligence involved with a project of this size that really brings the area plan into um, into play. And uh, considering where it is versus, versus what was originally drafted, what was originally intended. Um, because this will have a dramatic effect on everyone's lives who travels through the Mid Island area. And I, I'm not saying that to be melodramatic or a, or a, a sense of hyperbole. It's, it's simply the fact. Um, if we drive through there now, um, and the Donny Flake is closed for a portion of the year, a portion of the day, um, and we're, we're creating more ground cover, uh, times three levels, um, it, it's a dramatic change. So I'm, I'm hoping those are helpful, and um, those are my comments for now. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Stephen. I see Cam's hand. Cam, stop, please.
Hi, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. I have been listening quite a bit. Um, and I understand the development of the one-way traffic. I would just like to hopefully remind people that one-way traffic has a potential to solve the traffic problems in this area. Um, but it will also affect the businesses in this area. If you can only get to On Island Gas and Cumbes by going around, you're going to have to go around to get to Sparks, to get to those businesses. So I think there's a traffic pattern that will broaden out from this that also has to be considered, um, and the impacts that that traffic will have on those neighborhoods that will suddenly become sort of backdoor entry points um, to access the one-way streets. Um, I'd also like to say that, as I've pointed out before, both Sparks and Pleasant are, and Orange are vital arteries to transportation from one side of the island to the other. If you're in Sconset and you want to go to Mattikit, you've got to take one of these three, vice versa. Um, so I, I'm just trying to uh, give a shout out for an in-depth look. If we're going to take a look at one-way travel, how that will impact many more things. Because as has already been said, and as we will see again this summer, I'm not sure traffic is an issue. Cars are, and you can't have the development that we have been experiencing and not expect to sit in line. So I think we need to be patient as we sit in the lines that are coming for the summer. So, thanks.
Thank you, Cam. Do not see any other hands raised. Meg, I look to you to see if there's anyone from the audience.
I'm not seeing anyone, no.
Uh, Dan, have you gotten a good earful and gotten some ideas or comments that that are uh, going to help you, hurt you, or do you have anything to to add?
Sure, I've been, I've got lots of notes. I think a lot of it, uh, I think a lot of the stuff we've discussed in different forms already. Uh, a couple of things I just want to highlight, just to generally answer some of the questions. Uh, I know parking is obviously a concern. There's no, no debating that. Uh, but one of the things we are looking to do, when the, when the application originally came in, we gave you what was projected to be the parking demand, which is around a hundred and ninety-something parking spaces. Uh, one of the things we're looking at as this project develops, is that calculation also presumes multiple spaces per apartment. So to answer a couple of questions that came up early on, we would like to certainly pursue restricting every apartment to only one car, period. Uh, and as well as top, on top of that, one of the discussions we've been looking at, and I know, uh, I think Cam mentioned this earlier, is we'd like to provide each one of the apartments a space in the garage, a dedicated space. Uh, the idea being, we'd like to have the regular tenants in the garage more so than the general public. So a par, a space in the garage for every apartment unit, a space in the garage maybe for every office space, or something to that effect. What we're trying to do is get the more regular users in that garage, while at the same time restricting how many cars they can have per unit. And I think what you'll see in that is discussion on the parking waiver will become very small. Uh, and adding to that, how we're adding more spaces, based on the layer we have now, our parking count available is going up, not down. So I think what you're going to see is we're meeting someplace a lot closer. We may not hit the actual number required, but the percentage of the degree of waiver we had originally talked about, I think, will be drastically reduced. So I just want, it's not obviously fixed yet, but I just want to put it out there that we are working towards getting to a better number in that area. I know the next big item, I knew it would come up when I, when I threw it out there with the open space. We're well aware that's a concern. I threw it out there because I wanted everybody to start thinking about it. Because when we originally proposed the application as a standalone project on its own lot, uh, we had the square footage we were looking for, and we could provide the open space. But in, in pushing to share the driveways and the parking with all the abutting properties, uh, which I think we all think, us included, is a great idea, it starts to take away space that we normally would have landscaped as a standalone lot. Uh, it's not to say that we can't still mess with the buildings and make some changes and provide more open space. Uh, but I think that the open space question may turn into the bigger question as we progress than the parking. Uh, because in the event, we're trying to share the parking on the sides of every place, we're wiping out the places with normally the landscape. Uh, so I just want to put that out there. That's, you know, certainly gonna keep working on it, see if we can get this better refined. Uh, and one other thing, I know this has come up a couple of times, in terms of the one-way idea in Sparks Ave and Pleasant, um, I would say regardless of this project, we would, you know, as an engineering traffic standpoint, I think it's a great idea, regardless of whether or not this project were to happen. Uh, so that's definitely something I would love to see you as a board pursue that regardless of our standing. Um, I just see that as something, as a very long-term process, probably, you know, with the lifespan larger, longer than this permit, is my, my expectation, given how long it will probably take to get that in place. Um, and in terms of everything else, the, the building massing, the size of the buildings, uh, I understand everybody's concern that obviously into the, to the degree that can be brought in front of you, it will be. But we also want to keep looking at this. We're trying to provide a large amount of apartments. Uh, and some of those apartments are also going, looking to do affordable housing in some of those. Uh, so it's a, it's a mix and match process. If we try to really downsize this project, take away area, take away floors, um, something has to give. So at the end of the day, the project still has to be economically functional. And I'm not throwing it out there as to say we can't do it, but as we start to really get on the path of reduce, 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 then we have to give in lots of different places. So I just want to keep that in mind. If we start to try to take things away, it has to come out across the board, and the apartments are really what's gonna suffer. I think that's, I mean, generally speaking, got all the comments, I will take a look at the Steamship, project done by the Steamship Authority. Uh, and I know one other question that came up was to do with construction. I think from a construction sequencing schedule, I suspect that if we get to the point where we're looking at an approval, uh, I would expect a thorough discussion on conditioning and sequencing, and probably even a whole meeting just dedicated to construction or some condition there, there outside. It may be early to bring that up, but I'm certainly expecting that will be a condition for the project. I think I've generally covered. I know there's a lot of comments, but they all focused. A lot of them, if everything really is focusing now, it sounds like traffic, parking, open space. Uh, so hopefully I didn't forget anybody.
Thanks, Dan. I still see a couple of hand raised, so um, Barry, you, you're always so patient, so I asked you to remain patient. I wanted to just comment. Dan, first and foremost, I appreciate that you're um, looking to the parking and and trying to eliminate cars and, and, and have more affordable housing, uh, more employee housing, et cetera. That's, that's going to um, help a, a, a segment of our population that is really in need of it. Um, but I would like you to think about that, because by limiting the parking, we can't, I don't know where the enforcement agency is going to come into play, whether there's monitors or stickers or something like that. Because by limit, limiting it, um, each apartment to one, one car, that doesn't necessarily guarantee that there are going to be two people in an apartment and both have cars. It's just going to guarantee that only one person parks in these particular underground parking places. The second person might find an alternative place to park, whether it be on the street somewhere, in the stop and shop parking lot overnight, uh, over by Sea Grill, that's going to be taken away from a parking in the restaurant. Um, by, I, I know the, the concept of what you're trying to um to do, but there's not really an enforcement agency to, to mandate that only one person has a car. We just might not see it somewhere. And by doing so, they're going to take away a part, a parking place from another business or, or residence or some, somewhere else. So we have to look at the size of the building, and I know it's all a numbers game too. Does it make sense um to reduce the size of the buildings financially to maybe not have eighty units, maybe to have, you know, fifty-five units, and that would reduce the required parking and, but, but it might not make that financial sense to do that. And I understand that. It's really a checks and balances and make sure it's profitable. Why would you do the project? But what I'm hearing from uh the board members, public, it's not just about parking, it's the size of the buildings, you know, the, the magnitude of this. And again, we're looking at long-term and spreading everything out. So if we're looking at a long-term plan, maybe your particular project does not have to solve all the housing crisis on the entire island. You could be a small part to help, uh, assist with housing. And then maybe the Craig property or where we were going to put the funeral parlor or something might turn into a small business on the first floor or apartment. So the overall picture, and this is what we're trying to talk about, long-term, over the next twenty years, how this area gets developed, maybe five of these projects with a smaller uh footprint, a smaller sized building would have the same outcome to affect housing in the mid-island area than trying to fit it all in one big project. And I appreciate what you're trying to do, but, you know, I know it's a checks and balances, checks and balance with your, uh, with financially profitable positions. You're not going to be doing it to lose money, but maybe there's some way to um have the, you know, the state subsidize some of these um units so that we can make a smaller building, but it's subsidized, so it makes a financial sense. Um, there, there are other different um avenues instead of having them all marketable, and I know you're talking about some being affordable. Uh, that's great, but as you know, with the forty Bs that we've been um doing on the island, there's only one affordable for every three marketable, and what it, we're chasing our tail. Uh, we're not having enough affordable units unless we dedicate all of them to being affordable. So, you know, I don't want to rant and, but I just want to keep bringing up the fact that we're hearing over and over again from different segments that the, the size of this, the, the, you know, you know, three floors plus a underground, four floors, and maybe the height is just a little too large for this particular area. I'm not opposed to the project, and I appreciate what you're trying to do. But I think scaling down something and maybe looking at this from an, an island-wide project, instead of your particular um developer's project, uh, we can work together to make the whole area kind of accommodating and, and fit the need that we're facing right now on the island. And that's, again, a lot, a lot said, but hopefully it resonated with some of y'all. Anybody else uh from the public, Meg?
No, I'm not seeing anyone else with their hand raised.
Any board members before we look to move on? Well, Dan, thank you as always. Um, we appreciate your thoughts and comments and your, uh, your preparation. Doesn't go unnoticed. We just hope we didn't uh spoil your night.
That's, I appreciate everybody's time. What I'll, what I'll say is that I know there's another meeting in April. What we'd like to come back to the board with if it's done in time, if we can get the traffic report done in time and into your hands in time for the review for the next meeting, would probably shoot for that as a next discussion topic. Uh, if we haven't, if we're still in progression with the abutters on the driveways and things, uh, if we haven't gotten that to a point where everybody's in agreement with me and continuing the next meeting, and I'm not gonna, I don't want to waste the board's time and come back with the same plan if I don't have something new to present. Uh, so at this point, we'd like to continue the next meeting in April, but depending where things fall, we may or may not continue it again.
Great. Uh, do I need to get a motion to continue to the next meeting?
So.
May, yes, Barry.
Yeah, so I make a motion at this point, we continue to the May ninth meeting.
May ninth?
Yeah, that'll be our, that'll be our next meeting because we're, we're into, there's no other meeting scheduled for April right now. Um, and if you don't have enough information at this point, or you feel like you need to throttle back, we can continue with further. But um, so that's my motion, continue to May ninth.
Is there a second? Uh, motion's been made by Barry to continue to May ninth, second by Nat. Roll call, Barry.
Hi.
Nat.
Hi.
Dave.
Hi.
Fritz.
Hi.
And the chair votes aye.
And thank you. Thank you.
We met, see you next month. All right, uh, I think moving on. I think we're at, Meg, are we at public comments?
Yep, so we're at general public comments. Still have a few people hanging on in the audience, so if anyone's out there to comment, if you would use the, the raise hand function. Not seeing anyone.
Okay, um. Well, I, uh, not to spoil a very productive meeting, but I just want to um make a comment on my own. I, I don't generally comment and, and read through social media, and I just see that there's, there's tension out there, and I'm only commenting because I, I want to, I still want people to tune in. Um, comments, whether negative, positive, are always educational and they help put a perspective on things, so um, that's not going to stop. However, um, I just want to caution also, you know, not only our planning board members, but other committee members. Um, there's a lot of opinions there, out there, and I, I have my own. And I would like, when I, when I state my opinion, other, if we're in an open um meeting, then I'm representing my opinion at that particular time with the board that I'm, that I'm on. Um, if I make a private comment, I would like to preface it that my comments are my opinions and not necessarily um re- reflection of the uh our board members, my board members' opinions, whether it be on the three different boards that I'm on, um, I always like to um state that. So, uh, I just want to remind everyone because there are, there's a lot of stuff going on, and I want, I, I don't want anybody uh misrepresent, misrepresented of the opinions uh for the particular boards, and it's their personal opinions, and I appreciate that and respect that, but I don't want to confuse anything with any of the board members, and I, I hope you all know that this isn't um, we're, you know, this isn't to single out any one member, uh, multiple members, it's a general statement. So uh, we're, we're getting very close to annual town meeting, and I think we're going to have a lot of public comment, and we're going to have a lot of comment from our own boards and committees. So we just have to be careful of what we say privately, that is our own, you know, private opinion, and not necessarily representing the opinions of the board. So, uh, that's all I'd have to say on that. And with that, I'd entertain anybody else with any kind of questions or comments, um, or if there's other business, we can move on.
We're gonna discuss, will we discuss in the survey, John?
Uh, that is another business, but I
Okay.
Cam's hand is raised, so I will recognize Cam, if, unless she's going to be talking about the spa survey, that's next.
I am, uh, believe it or not. I, I was actually going to comment and thank everyone for their productive input, and um I think altogether, it ends up helping create a, a better plan for the island and for everyone else. I know that when change is coming, people can get sort of up in arms about um the unknown, but I, I think you guys are doing a really nice job, and I appreciate all of your comments. So, thank you.
Thank you, Cam. All right, with that, Meg, unless there's someone else in the audience with a hand raised, I would like to move on to other business, and um, you know, there was a survey put out and about the spas uh downtown, and I'd like to have a discussion with the board if they so choose to um comment, because I know it's been in the paper, um, so this might be a chance to um state something or any kind of concern or just an open, open discussion about it. So if anyone has anything to say, I'd recognize you.
I guess, I don't know. I might as well start.
Dave, your hand went up and then went down.
I, I haven't moved, I haven't moved yet. I don't know why.
Dave, go ahead.
Dave's a great, Dave's driving around a great point. Uh, do you want Dave to talk first, John?
I just have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
And, and this might be my bad because I just haven't seen it. I still haven't seen the questions. And, and I don't know if Meg can put them up on the screen and we can go over them, because I think that would be helpful to the discussion. And I, am I the only one that hasn't seen them?
Probably.
I mean, yeah, it is my fault. I, I claim it, but yeah, um, or maybe Meg could just email them real quick if she probably five times and I've just missed it.
I sent that, let me make sure I sent it to the right email. I sent it to you and I sent it to John. I don't think I sent it to the whole board in alternate.
I apologize.
That's okay, let me find it.
Only me, um.
So I, I will say, um, there was uh the, I think it's, uh, Meg correct me, the Nantucket Town Association, um, uh, that is a a, a committee that was formed or a group that was formed that is working under the Civic League or a branch or part of a group under the Civic League, and they put out a survey about pools, downtown pools. A lot of different questions. I was, and I'll speak because I was interviewed with the local paper, the Inquirer Mirror, and I had not a lot to say, but I had a fair amount to say. And the, in summary, what I had said was, you know, a survey is good. It will bring about um questions and, and food for thought. Um, but there is the potential for a survey to be biased. And I don't mean that as it sounds negative. It's, it's not. It's just a fact. Um, whoever writes the survey can direct questions, steer questions, and that's pretty much what I said to the paper. Because, and I used a particular example, and this might not be a great example, but I, I use this. Uh, I use this in the interview. I said, if you have a question and it's worded, um, how much do you dislike your parents? Do you like them? One being the least or five being the most? And there's no other answer, but the way did, the question is weighted to a point where if you do list one, it still means that you dislike your parents and you love your parents. Or five, it means that's a, a degree higher. There's no, and if you leave a blank, what do you do? That, 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 leaving that question blank does not necessarily help. It actually firms up other, uh, other votes for a, a better percentage. So um, I say that because with, you know, in cooperation with different boards, um, I know this particular survey did not have the cooperation from the town and the staff. Uh, we had talked about this at a previous meeting, I believe in November of twenty-first. Uh, we did say we would be open to working with um the group to create questions that we thought were um in the best interest of the town, on the town's behalf, and while listening um to the uh, the association um to maybe word questions and, and get the answers that we were looking for. So uh, I didn't say this, this, this survey was bad. I didn't say it was all negative. I think there are definitely some questions that we can um look at and learn from, but I would say that it's not necessarily one hundred percent um object, uh, objective. Uh, so that's all I was trying to say. Um, you know, it depends on who's making the survey in, and we have to look at that and not take every answer um as being factual. Um, it's, it's just, you, you, we can talk about it. Um, so that's all I'd like to say about that survey. Uh, anybody else um open for any kind of discussion? Um, so, uh, Dave?
Um, yeah, thanks, John. Um, I, I mean, I think this is a, a valid concept and an important concept to understand what everyone wants. I, I um agree with you, John. I just, I think that it was really poorly um poorly laid out, a- and I, I don't know whether that was, you know, on purpose, or, I mean, I just look at question nine, where, where it asks, please select and apply spas and hot tubs create, and then they give you a list of things they create when every single one of them is negative. There's, there's, I mean, you, you're really reducing that, what the answer is going to be here. So, I mean, I, I think that it's important. I think we need to understand what people want, but I, I also think that this really, this, this needs to be thought out better, and I think it needs not to be rushed and that we get correct and accurate information. It is my thought. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, real quick.
Go ahead, Nat.
Just, Leslie, I know you're on there, um, muted, but when did we do the first ROH survey? What year was that? Like eight years ago, nine?
I'm really not sure. I, I would guess it was around maybe two thousand eight-ish.
Was it that long? I know that, I know that that in, I know that that indoor pool at nineteen or twenty-one Union was like the, sort of like the final straw kind of thing that made all that controversy start. And I want to, I wanted to bring that up because that was a long, long before Zoom, long before COVID, long before the current sort of ability to, you know, blow up meetings and, and create all sorts of turmoil over these things that's happened in the last couple of years. And, you know, I filled out that survey. Um, the, the problem, I, I don't remember the survey back then, uh, Leslie, being island-wide. It was just ROH residents. Am I correct about that?
Yes, and we sent it only to the property owners in the ROH, and we coded all the surveys so that we would know if multiple surveys were returned, which in fact did happen. We had to deal with that, but.
It was very, it was very old-school male, like stick a stamp on the envelope kind of a thing. Okay. Um, so oh, you know, I, I kind of, I, I agree with what Dave said and what John's saying too. I, I, I read, I mean, when I did it, I was like, hmm, this is interesting. It's gonna be, it's leading, if somebody lives somewhere else and doesn't like pools or doesn't like, it doesn't really understand what this is actually about, the size and all that. It's, it hasn't been following some of the cases. They're not really gonna be able to ex- understand it. So I, I'm not saying that the survey was disingenuous at all. I'm just saying that, that the, where we are now versus in two thousand eight, or whatever that previous survey was, is, was like a hundred years difference compared to what it was then. There was a handful of these then. Like now we have so much going on. I, I just think that we have to be really careful about creating a new controversy by, by actually trying to fix the controversy. The other thing is a technical question that I wasn't addressed, and this is what concerned me with the case on one oh-three Main Street, was how does this affect the other bylaw, the, the seventy-five-hundred square feet in R one and R five, Leslie? Does this? Does this situation with the ROH is because that's the same language for the lots in R1 and R5 under 7,500 that we gave a positive recommendation for to continue. So this is a very odd crossover and I wanted to get your thought on that. I know you're not an attorney, but I'm sure you've figured this out already.
So these, so Article 54 is about hot tubs. So, so that doesn't affect Article 57, which is about swimming pools. If Article 55 is adopted, which just changes the size of hot tubs and swimming pools, then that, that would affect Article 57 in that the pools that are allowed have to be larger. I really don't think it's a big impact because I think their, their main initiative here is to address the hot tubs. And Article 57 is about swimming pools, which are larger by nature anyway.
Yeah, but what my question is, Leslie, is if you have an R1 lot under 7,500 square feet, what can you put in? The same as the ROH, correct? Am I wrong about that?
Yes. Correct. So it would change the size. So the size of a hot tub that would be allowed in R1 would now be smaller. It would go down from 150 square feet of surface area to 64. If Article 55 is approved.
See, this is why this is, isn't straight up one or another. This is, this has other tentacles attached to it. So that's all I'm trying to, I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to clarify that because this is not, may not at all be being thought about by anybody that's in the camp of changing these things. So we've gone to great lengths to get that under 7,500. And, you know, whether I agree with it 100% or not isn't the point. We, we've, we've continued that for one, you know, two cycles of town meeting. And, you know, I'm just saying that this has an effect on it. Okay.
I guess the root of the discussion would be in light of the survey that had, had come out. Would any of the board members change their opinion or their vote? And it's, it's over and done with, but curious if new information was shed to change your opinion. And.
Are you referring to this, this data survey?
Yes.
Is that what you're talking about?
Well, if it, if it had come out before our January meeting when we were voting on, you know, pools and spas and these articles, you know, if it was done prior to that and we had these answers, would any of you change your opinions? And some of you might, some of you might not. I mean, I, I'd be happy to state for the record, I, I would not have changed my opinion or my vote. Because the way I see it is again, unless this was a coordinated survey that worked with the town and the group and questions were written with the town's interests as well as the group's interests in mind. And there was a balance, then I would, I, I might look at something a little bit differently. But right now, based on what we have, you know, every article, as I've always stated, every article can be brought before the town and discussed at the town, annual town meeting. And I'm happy with what the town votes on. I mean, that, that's the process we have and, and I, I fall in line with that and appreciate that. But this particular survey does not change my opinion. And I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I know there's been a lot of discussion lately, not only privately but publicly and also, you know, social media in the, in the paper. So I just thought it would be important to bring up in case anybody wanted to air anything out and speak on that.
Mr. Chair?
Barry, was your hand up?
Yeah, it was. And I'll defer, but just real quickly, just from an administrative standpoint, Megan, were you going to still send that out to us? I'm not seeing it yet.
Yeah, I can send that to you guys. Do you want the results or comments? What version of this? Do you want everything?
Probably, I'd probably say particularly the results. I mean, just seeing the questions as they are is one thing, but seeing what came back in, you know, because we can define what's, what, what's going on with the questions. And then I'm going to kind of reserve comment because I'd also like to see if any of the participants who are on here on as well may have been some of the, the, the people who administrated this, this survey as well. But I'll reserve my comment until I hear a little bit more. Thank you. But having that would be just astronomically nice.
I'm going to send that to all of you right now.
Bless you.
Sam, I think I heard you. Go ahead, please.
Oh, thanks, John. I just, obviously, listening to your discussion, I haven't really changed my mind. I personally feel that I don't live so close to someone that when I look out my window, I could see directly, like with a five foot variation. So I don't feel like it's really my place to tell people who live in very condensed areas what they must and must not have or be allowed. So just, that's my stance on it. But I just would like to remind the board that the board was very forthcoming when it was first brought forward, that it would require a survey. It was also forthcoming in the fact that there was no one within the town that would have the time. And I totally understand that. I'm not saying anything because I know everyone's very busy to actually work with and coordinate the survey. I do believe that the members of the town association that helped to develop the survey are educated, knowledgeable people. I, I don't know about bias. One can see bias in many things, whether it exists or not. So I'm not really going to comment on that. But I, I did just want to remind people that the board did, did bring up very forcefully the idea of a survey. And I believe that they did follow through with a survey. Whether you like the survey or not is obviously a completely different thing and whether it meets your goals or needs or whatever is a different thing, but we did request it and it was provided. So that's, that's my comment. Thank you.
Dave Iverson?
Yeah, I mean, I, listen, I just want to reiterate, I, I think that that a survey done, I'm not convinced that this survey is fair or done properly. And I'm not saying that that's intentional at all. But I, I think that, I, I think a survey is important. I mean, we're a board that that serves the public. And if we can get the correct information, then we can make the correct decisions to, to give the community what they want. So I'm, I'm not opposed, I'm just, I feel like this was rushed. And I, I don't think that anyone intentionally did anything, but I think that, I think that it's important that we understand what the residents of, of these areas want. And I think that if we need to pursue it further than, than we should, I, I think it's, it wouldn't change my vote now. Because I'm not comfortable with the way the survey is, but I, I think it's our responsibility, if this continues to be a hot button issue like it is, is to really kind of burrow down and get to the bottom of it in a, in a form that we can all feel comfortable with and not feel like we might be persuaded by the loud minority instead of the majority. Thank you.
We do have Henry Terry with his hand raised from the town association. So do you want me to bring him over or are you keeping it to a board discussion?
You know, I'd like to, I'd like to include Terry. Being that he is a member of the, the, the association that put out the survey. So I would, you know, please recognize Terry. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Henry Terry. That's okay. I'm president of the town association. We're pretty small, 30 members. We all own property in town. Actually, our area extends to like a mile and a half from the Pacific Bank. We thought that there was a need for the survey and we didn't intentionally bias anything. We just felt that it needed to get done and hopefully before town meeting. I can try and answer questions I was involved in it. If any of you have them. So that's all I've got to say, John.
Great. Thank you, Henry. And, and again, I want to reiterate what Dave had said. I, no one believes that any of the, the, the questions were intentionally steered biased or, or, but the general statement was a survey can be biased or steered based on questions that are, are asked and it, we're not pointing fingers at anyone in particular that it was intentional. So just hear that. And as I said in the beginning, surveys are great. They, they will gain some information and give you food for thought. So, you know, thank you. And I know, recognize anybody on the board that may want to ask Henry a question or staff for that matter.
Well, that was easy.
Well, 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 again, thank you, Henry. Thanks for, thank you for attending the meeting and, and staying as late as you have.
I hope you can use the, the information.
Thank you. Board members, so with that, unless anyone has anything further to add or discuss. Leslie, yes?
So I'd like for you all to talk about your comment for a moment on Article 54. On the comment that's printed in the warrant says the board discussed this article at length and determined that additional public input is needed from the affected property owners within the ROH and SOH districts. Although a survey may be completed prior to town meeting, it was not underway as of the date of the planning board public hearing. So the question is, do you want to update your comment? Or do you want to not update it?
I'd refer to anybody on the board that has a comment. My position would be no. I think at the time we had material that we worked with, we made a comment on, we voted and I'm satisfied with my decision back then, but I will speak only for myself and leave it up to other members of the board. And I think what I'll do is poll each member, not to put them on the spot, but to see if they have something that they'd like to comment or change their vote individually. So if that is in the purvey of the, what you're seeking, Leslie, and that's okay, then I will start with randomly Barry. Your face is showing up, so it's not the same spot. I'll let you go first, please.
I'm probably not going to change my comment. And part of it is because I, I've got some concerns about the survey that was put forward. I've got some concerns that maybe staff had a, a quick glossary review of this, but not what I'd call an in-depth review. John, I think you, you did a really good job about summarizing some of the concerns with the way that, how questions can be intoned and worded. I mean, I'm concerned too that you've got 9% of that survey with, you know, with data in there from people who aren't even remotely related to the ROH, SOH district. And that I think biases things as well, too. I don't see what the denominator is on this. It says 453 return surveys. And what's missing is how many people are in those districts total that should have, how many households, I should say, should have responded to it, just so you get a sense of what the resultant was coming back. And I think as Nat had said earlier, on a survey that was done prior without good planning board input, it was amazing what cropped up. I mean, there were at least 50 surveys that came back in that were from the same households. So not was it a household survey, it was a personalized survey. So again, without having those appropriate checks and filters in place, I'm a little leery about this one right now. Want, want to make it such that as a planning board member, I'm saying that this survey carries the weight and validity for us to be able to change our decisions behind it. I appreciate that people took the opportunity to do it. It's great. But this is what we have a planning staff for who has to, you know, try to do these things in, in a very unbiased fashion. So because they have got to represent all viewpoints with, with something like this. And that's, that's where I think they're instrumental in helping to refine and craft certain, certain things that go on with this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Barry. And just for the record, I think you're, the comment about 50 voting certain answers or whatever responses from the survey might have been from previous survey, not this particular one. Note that, yeah.
I'm sorry if I misspoke. This was back to a survey that was done.
Trying to clarify just for the audiences listening. But thank you.
I really appreciate that. No, that was from a survey that was done back, I think about 2009.
Right, right.
Some of the information and data that came back was, was frightening. I remember having.
Just making that clear, but thank you.
Thank you. No, thank you for catching me. I appreciate it.
So that Barry Fritz, please.
Well, you know, I voted in favor of the article, so I have no intention of changing my vote.
The survey didn't change your mind? Okay. If that's all, that's fine. Nat, your comments?
Just, just a, just a question for Leslie again. How many properties? I mean, I don't expect you to have the number in your head, but I bet you have a pretty close idea. How many ROH individual properties are there? It was 304. I mean, is it 1,000? Is it like, you know, I don't know.
If I had known you were going to ask that, I have a chart that would have given us the exact number. But I did do a calculation of the total number of properties versus the number of responses that they received. And that was sort of assuming it was only one response per household. And they did have a very good response rate.
I think I read in the survey, Leslie, that it was, was it 70, 70% or something with the, with the amount of surveys that went out? Is that correct? Because there was a lot of 70% in there.
I, I think there might have been people who were opposed to hot tubs. I think their response rate was around 20, a little upwards of 20%.
Okay.
Just based on some quick numbers that I ran.
Who did not comment? Dave, did you comment?
No, I haven't. So we're, we're just talking about our comments in the warrant, correct?
So, your comments or if you would change your opinion or vote?
I wouldn't change my opinion, but I, I think the comment should reflect that, that we did, we did review the, the survey and that we, I don't know what the proper wording is, but I, I think, I think it's important that we're clear that, that, and there's clarity that, that we did look at the survey. There was a survey that came in late and that we just weren't real comfortable. We weren't real comfortable with the results. I don't know how to put it in a way that just, we got the survey, but, and we think it's important, but we didn't, we didn't have full confidence in the survey, I guess, is, is what I'm trying to say. But I think it's important that, that that we as a board acknowledge that that survey took place and, and why we didn't, why it didn't change our, our feelings. Does that make sense?
I'm fine with that comment. Okay. So I, I just wanted to put it out there for our, for our board. And, and thank you, Terry, for being available. Meg, did I see that? Anne?
Anne Dewey does have her hand up. She's the.
I, I don't want to make this into a big, you know, open, public, you know, debate, but Anne is a sponsor of. But Anne is a sponsor of a couple of articles, so I would like to recognize her. She's been listening in, obviously, so I want to give her the, the, uh, respect, um, to hear what she has to say. Anne, you know, if you can hear me, welcome.
Yes, thank you very much. Um, I, I just wanted to clarify that in the report that, uh, covers the survey, there are very clear numbers as to exactly how many households there are in the ROH and SOH, by the way, that were mailed with a postcard to, uh, ask for their participation in the survey. I think the number is one thousand six hundred and thirty-three. I could be slightly off, um, but it is actually printed in the report, as I recall. And, um, the response rate was twenty-two percent in town and thirty-five percent in Gonsit. And those are considered to be, um, very robust response rates, um, for a survey. So, um, if there seems to be, um, additional questions about those kinds of numbers, we would be more than happy to supply them. It was, um, comprehensive. People were mailed a postcard. And I checked in with a bunch of people who are off island and they got their postcards. So I think any, um, concern about whether or not the, all the people, all the property owners in ROH and SOH were, um, contacted for the survey. And what came back was quite carefully vetted and reviewed to weed out any duplicate responses, any ones that even looked remotely fishy. So I think that the, um, the numbers, the participation rates, the reach of the survey, um, are accurate. And, um, one can always argue about the nature of the questions, but the answers are what they are. And I would encourage you to read the report, um, of the survey. And if you want the survey underlying it, then clearly it's available. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Anne. Okay, with that, um, I don't see any other hands up. And unless there's anything else on the agenda, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. May, may go ahead before we make that.
No, I think Leslie had her end up to, I'm guessing, trying to finalize what's going on with the comment.
Okay.
Yeah, I want to clarify that you do want to change the comment to reflect that a survey was done. You reviewed the results, but you didn't have complete confidence in the, the survey itself or something along those lines.
I think individually, um, we, we polled, um, no one would change their position, whether it be in the initial vote for or against. So I would say that with our comments, I would leave it up to staff with what you generalized, um, as being appropriate to what our, our, um, discussion was and our comments individually made. So I would feel okay, um, having you state that as, as you just discussed.
Okay.
Yes, Fritz?
I just want to state for the record, I very much oppose doing that. I think that sets the wrong message. I think you're going down the wrong road. You may think that, but to put that in after the fact, certainly, I want, I want to have no part of it. And I want to make it clear that I have no part in it.
Okay, uh, Fritz, I'm not, I'm open to hearing discussion on that. I was thinking that was the proper response based on the survey coming out and the notion that if we had that survey prior to our, our voting in January, would we have changed our mind? And that was the discussion or, or the, the question brought about to the board. And I wanted to bring out the discussion because I, I wanted to see if, in fact, it would have changed opinions or votes. And I think by doing so, it wouldn't, including yourself. I think you're satisfied that you would not have changed your opinion on your vote.
I don't have a problem with you asking the question. And even if you want to put in the comment that the board, the majority of the board doesn't feel they would change the vote, what I very much object to is putting in the comment the suggestion that the buy, that the, that it was biased. I think that is very, very.
I don't think, I do, maybe I misunderstood, but I did not hear bias coming out of Leslie's. Maybe we can roll back the tape. I, I, I would not want to put that, that, that we would have changed, because we thought the survey was biased. I think the general, um, comment would be that, um, the survey being put out has, it, it has not changed the board's opinion on how they would have voted, generally stated. And, and that being your vote, too. I, I know, um, that you were for the article and the other board members were against. But the bottom line is, we would not have changed our, our vote, including yourself. And I don't want to make it sound negative that the, the survey was biased or it was done improperly. Dave has made that comment that there was no intention, so I don't want to add that in. I don't want to create more negative, um, comments. I just wanted to clear up what a lot of people might have thought that if we had this information, would the board have changed their opinion? And clearly, that was the only reason why I wanted to poll the, uh, board and get the response. And I think we have gotten that, um, that, that response. And, uh, please, we'll keep the discussion going before we adjourn. But I just want to get, you know, be clear, there's no ill intention meant. I think we just, and we don't want to use the word it was biased, because we're not saying that. We, uh, my comment was, any survey, I don't care what you're doing, can be biased. I didn't say this one was. But now that I have the survey and the responses, and I've read through all the questions and, and percentages, but I just would not, uh, I personally would not change my opinion or my vote at that time. Dave, your hand was up?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I mean, I, I don't think that, that was at least my intent, Fritz. I just think it's important that, that we say that the survey was done and not try to say that it wasn't. And, and that, and not saying that the survey was, was, just that we didn't have confidence in the survey and, and it needs to be looked at more. I, I, and if you don't, I, I'm fine with that.
I disagree with you. When you use the word, you don't have confidence in the survey, you're saying you don't believe the results. That's the point I'm making. And I'm not going to say another word about it. It really, I think it's poor, poor, poor way to, for us to act.
Okay, well, then, I mean, are you more comfortable with us just saying we saw the survey and it wouldn't change our vote?
Yes.
Okay, and that's what I, that, I thought I had just said that. Maybe I'm wrong again, but I thought I just said that. I didn't want to use the terms, uh, biased and be negative. I just wanted to say.
Neither did I.
We're aware of the survey and we polled the, uh, you know, our, our board. And with that, we were comfortable that the survey wouldn't have changed our vote, period. Uh, Barry, would you like to add to that?
Yeah, thank you. And if I came across that way, I have to apologize volumes. We, we did ask for something to be done and something was done, okay? I, I do appreciate that. What I'm saying to you is that I wish it, there's a part of me that really wishes it had been done earlier, given, given the way that's, how some of the information was approached. But people did it nonetheless, that's fine. And, and I just would have appreciated if it was maybe a little bit more robust. But I'm not trying to deny the survey. And I'm sorry if it came across that I was saying it was biased. All I'm just saying to you is that in a previous survey that was done deep in the past, it was very troublesome. It was very, very troublesome. And so I, 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 I've just tried to raise that issue real quickly, but not construe that the two are, are necessarily related to each other. So I apologize if that's the way it came across. Thanks.
Leslie?
Okay, so, so I think what, what I'm hearing is you just want to change the comment to note that the survey was done, but that it does not change your position or, or your motion on.
I think that's a neutral tone that states what we decided to do. We had a discussion and I think that is clear without being on one side pro or, or against. So I'm comfortable with that. Fritz, does that sound more appropriate?
I think that's, that, that's the fact.
Great. Yeah, that's good. Okay. So I don't think we need to vote for that, Leslie, um, or would you like to vote for that?
Um, I, I would like for you to take a vote. And I also just want to, you know, say that Megan and I did spend quite a bit of time, you know, providing feedback and comments on the survey, some of which were taken and, and others weren't. But I just want the board to know that, you know, we did go through that exercise a couple of times.
Okay, Leslie, just for the record, could you read back what you had just stated that we're going to use as an official comment so we can make a motion to vote on that?
Well, I didn't write it down, but, um, I thought we would, um, probably leave the beginning part of your comment. The board discussed the article at length and determined that additional public input is needed from the affected property owners within the ROH and SOH districts. And then, you know, after, you know, the, the public hearing concluded, a survey was done. The board reviewed it, but it did not change our recommendation or something along those lines. It, it seems to me like going back to your competence or no competence discussion that you would want to hear more from the affected property owners, maybe in a, in a different way or different information, in order to get you to where you might change your recommendation. But I, I think that's still an important part of it, but it's up to you all, whatever you want me to, uh, together.
I really wanted to be really to the point and address, you know, the survey. And pretty much, you know, bullet point, uh, a survey was given after our vote. We had a chance to review it. We had a discussion about it and, um, we felt that it did not change the individual board members' position or votes. That's all.
Okay, I'll put something together to that, sir.
Any other discussion from the board?
Mr. Chairman, you'll, I think the request from staff, which I believe is appropriate, is to call for a roll call vote or just a general vote, just to.
Yeah, we can just do a general vote.
Okay, yeah, I'm just saying, just something, just something to acknowledge officially.
No, I, I, I planned on, I just wanted to.
Oh, sorry.
For other comments or discussion before we went to a vote.
And I'm so, I'm so sorry.
That's okay, I appreciate it. That being said, is there a motion to approve what I had just, um, given, um, Leslie for the language that she, uh, put in as a comment on the survey?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Motion's been made by Nat, seconded by Dave. Roll call, Nat?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Fritz?
Abstaining.
Barry?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So we have, uh, four ayes and Fritz being abstaining. Okay, uh, thank you all. I know, uh, I, I just would like to end with, you know, we are a board, we try and represent the town the best to our abilities. We have individual opinions and we should respect our individual opinions. And I think it adds, um, you know, to, to, to the expertise of the board. So thank you. I do like, uh, each and every one of you. And, and I think we all, whether we agree, uh, we can agree to disagree respectfully and appreciate everyone. So with that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made to adjourn by Nat, seconded by Dave. Roll call, Nat?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you very much, as always. Appreciate everyone's time.
Thank you.
Your next one.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you. Take care.
Everyone.